Monday, July 7th, this is the Carney Board of Alderman Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Sunny, have you had a chance to take roll?
I have taken roll. David Lehman will not be with us this evening, and you have the call.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to personal appearances. The first item on our agenda this evening is new employee introductions.
This evening, we have Julie Dubinsky. She has joined us as our new HR manager. We're so excited to have her. She has a lot of great experience, and most recently she was at William Joel College, so we're excited to welcome her here.
I think that's all we have this evening. Next item on the agenda this evening is Mr. Lawrence Gration. Did I say it right?
Yes, you did.
I got it this right this time. Our Executive Director for the Carney Enrichment Council wanted to talk about the closure of Washington Street Walkway on Saturday, August 23rd, 2025, from 6:00 PM until 10:00 PM. For cigar smoking, outdoor grilling, and drinking alcohol related to their whiskey walking tour for an estimated of 50 to 75 participants. Mr. Gration, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Every time that I come before you, I remind you that 2024 was a year of rebuilding for KEC. We, as new staff, went through, have now gone through a whole year of learning all the things that we do and all the things that we did wrong. One of the good things we did last year is the Whiskey Walk, the Carney Whiskey Walk, was a great hit. But because we're not willing to rest on our laurels, we want to expand it, make it bigger, and make it more popular. The two major changes that we're making is at the start of it this year, we're having Jay Riegers from KEC come down and do lectures on tasting, so that as people go through, they know what they're looking for and what the difference is in certain whiskeys, which I don't. And what we want to do is have an after-party at Blue Heron, which will then spill into the Breeze Way, because we can't smoke inside Blue Heron. Barbecue will be tucked inside Blue Heron, so we want to expand the space that we have across into the Breeze Way. I'm assuming everybody's read the document on the minutes agenda, that's it. So at this stage, that's exactly what we're looking for. Having just walked through the Breeze Way now, I can assure you we'll leave it in better condition than it is today. Although it's not bad, but we'll clean it up. We've been working with Sheila. We've had a number of expectations listed before us. Whilst we haven't accomplished any of them, we have all of them in draft, including the police agreement, so we think we're there.
Great. Does any item on the board have any questions or concerns from Mr. Gration in his request for his organization's fundraiser?
My biggest concern is with the area that has been open and isn't a hole.
Yes.
And it does have some cones. It does have the bricks that were there kind of near it, around it. I, with people enjoying what you will be enjoying that evening, to have an open hole in the walkway is perhaps a concern of mine. So, yes, I'm glad to hear you say that it will be taken care of before this event. I'd hate to have someone break an ankle or anything. Yeah.
So is city staff gonna, I thought city staff is gonna replace the bricks that were removed?
We can't replace all of the bricks up to the building because it will increase the water flooding issue that is happening at the doorway. And so we've talked about possibly asking if we could make a flower bed there, but then that also may increase water going into the doorway. So just before you got here, actually tonight, I was throwing around the idea of maybe like fake flowers, something like that, but we'll definitely brainstorm along with KEC and Lacy to see if we can come up with a plausible solution that won't impact her negatively, but also will allow this.
Still be physically attractive, yes. We don't want to make this look sketchy.
And we'll see if we can move a couple of dumpsters and things like that, too.
Oh, gosh, pull a few weeds between the beds. A few things to be done left.
Great. If there are no other questions or concerns from the board, if we can entertain to approve the motion as printed in the agenda, it's a large motion this evening, so if we can entertain a motion to approve as printed in large in this evening.
We'll make that motion to approve as printed.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes unanimously. As always, wish you the best, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're gonna circle back to our new employee introductions. David, I think you have somebody to introduce to us.
We do have another person in the audience, Kevin Kirk, if you don't mind standing up. Kevin Kirk is our new building inspector. He started last week. He comes to us from a contractor side. He has many years of experience in carpentry, residential construction, and commercial construction, including, I would call it maybe quality control for his company, where he would review others' work, and so he's very familiar with building codes, and we're happy to have him here.
Welcome, Kevin. Excited to have you and your talents, and it's even better when we have a local resident joining our team, so happy to have you, sir.
Happy to be here.
Thank you. You are more than welcome to stay for the entirety of the meeting, but if you wanted to excuse yourself, now's a good time to get back to your family and stuff. All right, sir. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the open public comments. If there is any member of the general public that would wish to address your board this evening, if you can move forward and state your name and address for the records, and you will have three minutes, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kim Murphy, 1509 Rockwater Lane, Carney, Missouri. The streets in the Stone Lake subdivision were recently resurfaced. It was very well done. Old surface ground off one day, resurfaced the next day very neatly, no mess left behind. And we tried to show the ones working on the ground with the asphalt some Carney friendliness by delivering some bottled cold water while they were working. One, two. You may recall that I was very active in the successful use tax election, the police, pets, parks, parkways. I'm pleased that the various projects have been progressing. Tonight's agenda includes an item under Consent Agenda E, Pathways, Gaps, and Crossings Project Sidewalks, connecting 19th Street to Stone Lake Drive sidewalks, which uses a portion of these funds. I appreciate the city, the city engineer, and staff for reworking this particular section of the pathway and gaps project so the walks could be done. It will make it safer for those who can then use the walks rather than the street to go to school, to go to the skate park, the pickleball courts, and the trail. And hopefully, the work on the crossings at both Stone Lake and Meadowbrook Drive will make them more visible and safer for mostly the students and the walkers. Thank you. Like I say, I think things like that also need to be in the public record, and thank you all for the work that you do.
Thank you for taking the time to come and share your thoughts. Anybody else wish to address the board this evening under the open public comment section? We'll move to the consent agenda. Does anybody on the board have any questions or items of discussion on the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, if we can entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda passes as presented.
Thank you. I'm glad my speech didn't offend.
We'll move on to ordinances this evening. The first item this evening is a motion approving bill number 332025, presented by Sheila Ernstin, our city administrator, and ordinance approving the Clay-Platt Joint Marketing and Web Development Cooperative Agreement. Sheila?
If you would consider, this agreement has to do with marketing and increasing economic activity in the Northland during the World Cup next summer. It would be a partnership between Clay County, Platt County, and cities in both. Clay County is actually spearheading the contract, and this ordinance proposes giving a contribution of $5,000 to help pay our share of the effort to try to get as many people to spend money in the Northland and specifically Clay County, or Carney as we can.
What other cities are helping with the revenue, the cost share rather?
The proposal is to have North Kansas City, let's see, City of Liberty, City of Smithville, City of Excelsor Springs, City of Bloodstone, City of North Kansas City, and City of Carney.
That's all the question I have. Were there any other questions on the proposed ordinance?
I think this is awesome because FIFA is going to bring in a lot of tourism, and the more we can direct our community, the better it is for us and all of our businesses.
Great. If there are no other questions, if we can read the proposed ordinance on the first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving the Clay-Platt Joint Marketing and Web Development Cooperative Agreement.
I make a motion to approve. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving the Clay-Platt Joint Marketing and Web Development Cooperative Agreement.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman King?
Aye.
Voted unanimous, and the ordinance passes three to zero. Move on to the next item, a motion approving bill number 342025, presented by Sheila Ernstin, our city administrator, and ordinance amending Chapter 600 of the Municipal Code of the City of Carney, Missouri, pertaining to the sale of alcoholic beverages and operation of microbreweries in conformance with the provisions of Chapter 311 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri. Sheila?
This ordinance would codify past practice that has happened within the city but was not codified previously, and it would also update the fees to align with state law. What, and our city attorney drafted this ordinance for us. We do have a microbrewery that would like to, is interested in coming to town, and this will make that possible. And what, the need for it is that the state has liquor ordinances, and while we can be more restrictive than state law, we can't be counter or in conflict, and so we really need to get these added into our code so that we are not running counter or in conflict with state law.
We already had this with Rock and Run, right?
We were not able to find any ordinance that was passed previously. What we think happened...
I think we did, and we... Okay.
Not a specific ordinance.
Okay. Because I remember we were talking about Rock and Run when you came to give them their liquor license, the whole bit, so okay.
There is one provision in our code that has to do with resorts, so possibly...
They got in.
Possibly, but it doesn't quite match up with state law, and this will make sure that everything is perfect.
Makes sense. I have no questions. Are there any other questions or any concern with the ordinance as presented by our legal counsel? Seeing none, if we can read the proposed ordinance on the first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 600 of the Municipal Code of the City of Carney, Missouri, pertaining to the sale of alcoholic beverages and operation of microbreweries in conformance with the provisions of Chapter 311 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri.
Make a motion to approve on first reading. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 600 of the Municipal Code of the City of Carney, Missouri, pertaining to the sale of alcoholic beverages and operation of microbreweries in conformance with the provisions of Chapter 311 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri.
Make a motion on second reading.
I'll second that.
Pull the board, please.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman King?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
The vote is unanimous, and the ordinance passes three to zero. Next item is a motion approving bill number 352025, presented by Eric Marshall, our Parks and Recreation Director, and ordinance authorizing a park reservation agreement between the Carney R1 School District and the City of Carney, Missouri to host a pickleball tournament at the Pickleball Complex.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance states just that. It's a group within the school district that is sponsored by the school district wishes to conduct a pickleball tournament on Sunday, August 24th, specifically the Carney High School Golden Girls team is a fundraiser, and we do have, we have in the past allowed this through the school, and we do have their insurance on file.
Any questions from the board? If we can read the proposed ordinance in the first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance authorizing a park reservation agreement between Carney R1 School District and the City of Carney, Missouri to host a pickleball tournament at the Pickleball Complex.
Make a motion on first reading.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance authorizing a park reservation agreement between Carney R1 School District and the City of Carney, Missouri to host a pickleball tournament at the Pickleball Complex.
Make a motion to approve on second read. I'll second that.
Pull the board, please.
Alderman King?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
The vote is unanimous, and the ordinance passes three to zero. We have no resolutions this evening, and we'll move on to items for review and presentation. The only item we have on the agenda this evening is the Fiscal Year 2026 City of Carney Priorities Update from our city administrator. Sheila?
Thank you, Mayor. This is only the very end of the very first quarter of fiscal year 2026, but because coming up soon, you have your priority setting session, I thought that it would help to kind of give you an update of where we are, and so you can, and just a reminder of what the initiatives and the priorities were for fiscal year 2026. At the DAS, I did play the presentation, and it has like...
I'm gonna try and share if I can manage to do that.
Oh, you're good. Okay, let's go to the next page. So first, the very first priority of the board is basic services, and there were two fiscal year 26 initiatives. One of those has been completed. The one that has been completed is funding dedicated staff for communications and human resources. And then we have the second initiative, review the city's fees to ensure they are covering the costs to provide those services. That is in process, and we anticipate that that will be completed by the end of fiscal year. Not initiatives, but kind of longer-term goals that the Board of Aldermen set in place are overarching. I'm gonna talk about each one of those and just tell you some of the things that we are doing to work towards that goal. Because it's multi-year, it's gonna take longer, but making sure that you understand what was included in the budget, and then that staff is on the right track of where you wanted us to go. So first, basic services, continue delivering high-quality services to residents and improving services as funding allows. The services that the city provides are public safety, that's police and court, water, sewer, streets, sidewalks, and trails. Economic development, that economic development is the shops at Carney certified costs. That's what that $1.3 million is. Trash and recycling, both curbside and at the recycling center. Parks and recreation, community development, community events and services. That is mostly Carney Enrichment Council, the majority of that budget. Animal control, code enforcement, and a historic museum. Then the next goal under basic services was maintaining the commitment to public safety so Carney can remain one of the safest cities in the state, working to fully fund the resources law enforcement needs, including an additional SRO and updated equipment. We did try to find funding to be able to add an additional SRO, and that was not successful in April, but the other things that are included in this budget are equipment, updated equipment, dash and body cameras, patrol rifles, patrol vehicles, new handguns, and enclosed utility trailer and computer equipment. Also under basic services is enhanced communication efforts with the community, including social media, the city website, and other communication tools. And again, we're just in the first quarter of this, but we still have an ongoing communication team. We are hosting community open houses for projects. We are updating the city website. We have been sending out targeted emails for amphitheater concerts and recreation programs, and we are focusing on keeping our social media accounts updated and on targeted mailings, and we've sent out mailings related to the K353 program, the lead-in copper rule, the fluoramine conversion, and then, of course, utility goes. And then finally, well, it's actually not finally. Also under basic services is investing in workforce programs to make the City of Carney an employer of choice. The things that we are doing to help that happen, we have an employee engagement team who works on employee events, helps get the employees invested in the community by doing drives such as the school supply drive or at Christmas, helping host families. Policy reviews, we are invested $185,000 in this year's budget for professional development and training. We're doing bi-monthly one-on-one employee meetings, employee performance reviews, and employee development plans. We are, every year, the board approves a salary schedule. It's evaluated annually, and it's based on merit, qualifications, experience, and market conditions, and then we are reviewing our employee benefits to try to remain competitive. And then finally, under basic services, we are regularly reviewing and updating city policies and procedures to ensure efficiency and responsiveness. The code updates that have happened this year are the animal regulations, tonight, the liquor, and on the horizon are changes to our outdoor merchandise display to codify what is already happening within the city, and then short-term vacation rentals. That is going to be something big with the World Cup 2026. We are working on a development guide to be more development-friendly that will give developers, and really anyone that submits an application, a one-stop shop so they're not having to go through and come through all of our codes to put things together. Hopefully, it's nice, easy to read. A comprehensive fee schedule, and then we are working really hard to get written standard operating procedures for everything that we do. Your second broad category had to do with infrastructure. All of the board initiatives are in progress. None of them have been completed, except for, it says in progress for develop a plan to extend water lines down Nation Road. We have a plan. We just haven't completed the work. So I almost say that we should count that one.
It's real progress.
And then adopting higher-quality construction standards for public infrastructure. Right now, under, for our stormwater utility, we are actively in process a stormwater master plan, and then we will also be looking at updating our APWA standards to more current ones. Streets and sidewalks, we also are in process on a transportation master plan, and we will also be looking at the APWA standards and updating those and bringing that to you. Waste water collection, again, APWA standards, and water distribution, APWA standards. For act-on master plan recommendations to maintain the city's infrastructure, we put in the budget all of these items from our sewer master plan, from our water master plan that were completed last year, and also use our pavement condition index that Stan Tech developed, and we were able to use all those tools to make sure that we included that in this year's budget. If you guys have any questions, please stop me because I'm really trying to hit the high points. Okay. Continue progress on key capital projects, including roads, city facilities, water, and sewer, sidewalks, and trails to ensure projects are completed. In this year's budget, we have the Matt Porter Park Connector Trail, the 19th Complete Street Project, the pathways, sidewalk, gaps, crossings, and also Regency Highway 33 and the Highway 92 sidewalks. So we have all those underway, at least in planning, and then the Clark Street water line replacement. Some of these items kind of hit more than one. Instead of listing them multiple times, I tried to only list them once. The Clark Street water line replacement?
We got it under contract for design right now. I don't wear my robe top in my head. I could follow up.
It will be in the fall winter. No.
Probably next spring.
I would doubt that, but since they just started designing, I think they had their first meeting last Friday.
Also under infrastructure, expand infrastructure to accommodate future growth and development within the city. We're looking at that Nation Road water line extension, the Carney Westside CID Waterline Loop and Capacity Project. Almost ready to complete the water tower at the end of this fiscal year. Waste water treatment plant and system expansion, and the Nation Road Complete Street Project. And then one of your third overarching priority is housing in the city. Attracting multifamily, mixed-use, or medium-density housing projects. It's in progress. One of your priorities under housing is ensure city codes, i.e. minimum lot size, encourage multifamily, mixed-use, and attainable housing for all members of the community. We have already, you have approved ordinance 1611 2025 that amended the Chapter 405 zoning regulations. You also approved 1592 2024, which is the K353 redevelopment plan, and then the Planning Commission approved the city's future land use map that was reviewed and updated. Then continue working to attract and enable the development of multifamily and attainable housing. The tools that we really have for that are Chapter 100 and Chapter 353, and also community improvement districts. Collins Apartment Project is one of the projects that utilized Chapter 353. Cottage is at Cottonwood Creek, and Cottonwood Creek is flat. I think both of those would apply, and they didn't need any tools being used. They came by themselves. Yes. And then under commercial retail, you have three initiatives. One of them has been completed, and that is ensuring that attracting commercial development is a key focus area of the city's economic development strategy. That 100% is a key focus. And then there are a couple that are in progress, but we anticipate having completed them by the end of the fiscal year. And then use your categories underneath commercial and retail. Use economic development incentives on a case-by-case basis to encourage new commercial and retail businesses, including light industrial and manufacturing. So the new development that we've had so far this first quarter of the fiscal year is the Les Schwab Tire Center, and that is in a TIP district. And then at Innovation Business Park, we are adding Precision Athletics, the Flusmeyer Building, and Star Development. Under activate and strengthen downtown through the development... Under activate and strengthen downtown through the development of strategies and collaboration. We have the Connected Carney Plan. Um, that open house is actually on Thursday this week. So if you can, please come. We are working really hard on, um, property maintenance code enforcement. We also have the downtown special events of Oktoberfest, Halloween Blast and Carney's Magical Night. And then the, um, K three fifty-three redevelopment plan. And then under encourage high-quality building construction for commercial and retail developments by adopting construction design standards. This year before the end of this fiscal year, um, you will be able to consider an ordinance, an ordinance that is elevating the design standards for commercial and retail development in the city. And then under quality of life, um, we have three items that are still in progress. But we have made a lot of progress on especially partnering with existing organizations and businesses, but we're just not done yet. So I didn't want to say that it was completed. Under maintain existing trails and park amenities and exploring enhancements as funding permits. Included in this year's budget, um, was funding to complete Hall Park, the Jesse James Park Web Climber and Ten Spin Replacement, the new skate park ramps, a new mower, soccer balls and nets, bathroom doors at Mac Porter Park and the dechlorination and red wrap improvement at Lions Park. And then exploring community partnerships for special events to use park department resources such as the amphitheater. We have the Jesse James Festival, um, Carney School District five K and Color Run, the Bits Bull Ride, World Cup twenty twenty-six watch party. That, um, I think we have put in for a watch party at Jesse James Park next year on Juneteenth. Which is a Friday next year. And it also happens to be the men's game, um, or one of the men's games.
Intermittent.
That's awesome. And then KSD Pickleball Tournaments and the Carney Education Foundation Turkey Truck. And then leveraging park department assets to generate additional revenue such as the amphitheater. We've added food and flick Fridays, yoga in the park, kids stay in the park, Life eighty-eight point five free concert, the five versus five versus five adult softball league, played against sports, baseball and softball camps and the Challenger Sports Soccer Camp. And that, just seven days into the beginning of second quarter, we were very busy first quarter.
Phenomenal progress just a quarter into, uh, our, our twenty twenty-six fiscal year. I'm not surprised to see all the work. I know our, our staff is extremely busy and a lot of these projects are infrastructure related. I know it's not always sexy. You don't always see a big, beautiful building and, or fast afterwards. But it's extremely important, obviously to this board that we continue to not only invest in what's new in this community, but take care of our current infrastructure and, and, and needs as well. So I would challenge anybody to find another budget or another period of time that this city has historically invested this much money in, into our infrastructure. So I'm, I'm just really proud of that and appreciate staff's hard work and the board's support on all of that. Anything else?
No.
Awesome. We'll move on to mayor's communications. The only thing I have this evening, um, and I, I put a social media post out sharing the same appreciation. But, um, I had another wonderful time in our park on the third of July for our celebration. The, the, our park staff did a phenomenal job getting the facilities prepared. Um, I'm, I'm sure there's other staff that possibly helped too. Uh, but Ray and his crew and the boots on the ground just had the park looking phenomenal. Um, and then I want to share some appreciation to all of our staff, the volunteers, um, our, our law enforcement officers, our friends at Carney Fire and Rescue, um, the Lions Club, the Knights of Columbus and all the volunteers and vendors that showed up and, and made this year a success. I loved having the five additional food trucks kind of scattered throughout the park. Um, I think that totally helped out not having a two-hour wait every, all night long for drinks and, and snacks. But, um, Eric just did a, a great job, a, a wonderful display. So hats off to staff and, uh, everybody involved, uh, that, that made that event successful. I will say, coming from an, an, an old trumpet player myself too, um, I really enjoyed the change up in the band this year. The, the band was phenomenal. So, um, thank you. That's all I have for mayor's communications. We'll move on to the city administrator report.
So a reminder that our next board meeting will be a work session. So it will be part one of two for your priority setting session. Um, it's gonna be on Monday, July twenty-first at six thirty P M. at the Carney School District Administrative Offices. And then, um, after that, we will go back to regular board meeting on Monday, August fourth. And then we'll begin with another work session.
We'll move on to Alderman Discussion. Alderman King?
Again, just thanks for all the staff, do all the hard work. You guys are awesome.
Thank you.
Very good job.
Alderman Holt?
I don't have much, um, July fourth around here is always like a big war zone normally. Um, we like to sit up on nineteenth street and watch all the subdivisions. And this year, um, it seemed like we had more people that were actually watching. Usually you got a lot of traffic going on up and down the streets where people are trying to shoot off fireworks and stuff. And it's always dangerous because kids are trying to light something or whatever. We noticed that, uh, there wasn't as much traffic through town this year and it was a real safe event. And, uh, usually about every year, we end up hearing a police car or ambulance or something going somewhere where somebody's got hurt or something. And this year we didn't see any of that. And I thought that we had a real safe Fourth of July for, for our city and I was real proud of, of everybody. And then the next day I drove around and I was pretty impressed with how many people actually cleaned up their mess. Cause a lot of times it's disaster. But, uh, now some people didn't, but for the most part they did. So it looked good.
Alderman Spencer?
I will also piggyback on commending staff for everything they do and especially obviously for the July, the park staff. Kudos. It was a great event. And a huge thank you to Kim Murphy. It is a rare, rare occasion that we give positive feedback in this room, especially at that podium. So, thank you.
You're welcome. You earned it.
That concludes Alderman Discussion. We do have an executive session noticed up on the agenda this evening. Uh, per RSMO six ten oh two one subsection one for legal actions of litigation involving a public governmental body in any confidential or privileged communication between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys. And RSMO six ten oh two one subsection twelve to discuss matters pertaining to negotiated contracts. And RSMO six ten oh two one subsection thirteen for individually identifiable personal records, performance ratings or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment. A reminder, our meeting will be adjourned from there. So this will conclude our open public session of the meeting. If we can consider a motion to enter into executive session at seven oh eight P M.
I'll make a motion?
I'll second.
Pull the board, please?
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman King?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Vote is unanimous. So we'll enter into executive session. Everybody have a good evening. Thank you for being here.